All right, good evening, everyone. The time is now 7:00 PM and I'd like to call to order the February 28th, 2024, Meeting of the Library Board, Downers Grove Library Board of Trustees. Please stand in for collection.
I pledge allegiance to the library of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty of the justly sworn.
Madam Chairman.
Let me introduce the land acknowledgement statements.
Oh, roll call.
We acknowledge that the Downers Grove Public Library sits on the unceded, traditional and ancestral homelands of Native peoples. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Indigenous people who have been caretakers of the land throughout generations, past and present. We invite you to learn more about the genocide and forced displacement by non-Native settlers and the ongoing injustices against Native peoples. Let us do roll call.
Trustee Dougherty.
Here.
Trustee Humphries.
Here.
Trustee Kuntia.
Here.
Trustee Niemberg is not in attendance today. Trustee Sledak.
Here.
And President Giga.
Here.
Madam Chairman, President. In the light of the interest of the public in tonight's agenda and try to respect people's time, I move that we revise the agenda to put the public comments next, and then the trustee comments, and then the resolution that most people are here to witness.
All right, we have a motion to move the agenda items around to have public comment, trustee comments, and then Resolution 9(c) before moving back up to item 4, approval of minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor of proposed agenda changes, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And all those abstained? All right, we will be moving the agenda around as trustees Sledak had proposed. So we are going to move on to public comment. All right, before I open the floor to public comment, I want to review a few quick things. First off, the public comment portion of this meeting is meant to be an opportunity for you, the public, to provide comments and feedback about the Downers Grove Public Library to the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees. It is not your opportunity to address, attack, or disrespect library administrators or staff. It was never intended to be a platform to air public grievances about differing political ideologies or larger world events. I've been disappointed in the behavior of many attendees at our previous meetings. So I'm going to go through the expectations one by one. There is a copy of these at the front as well. Public Comment Rules for DGPL Board Meetings. The meetings of the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees are open to members of the public pursuant to the Illinois Open Meetings Act. The purpose of these rules is to ensure that interested parties representing various points of view are allowed time to present their views while permitting the board to conduct their meetings in an efficient and effective manner. These rules govern public participation during the public comment agenda item in meetings of the DGPL Board of Trustees. Number one, minutes are a summary of the board's discussions and actions. Therefore, public comments and written materials submitted by the public may not be reflected verbatim in the minutes. Video recordings of meetings provide access to the full content of public comments. All public comments will only be heard during the public comment agenda item. All public comments should be directed to the Library Board of Trustees only. The board requests that members of the public limit their comments to three minutes, a max of five minutes per speaker, and 30 minutes total for public comment are allowed. The board president shall have the discretion to modify these time limits. The board requests that individuals limit repetitive comments, and any group appoint one speaker to present the views of the entire group. Visitors to meetings must adhere to all behavior guidelines in the library's code of conduct. If a visitor engages in prohibited conduct, the board president may prohibit further comments at a specific meeting or may ask the visitor to leave the meeting. The board president shall have the authority to determine procedural matters regarding public participation not otherwise defined here. If any of these rules are not followed, it is in my authority to end your comments prematurely and/or ask you to leave. If we, as a group, are unable to conduct the public comment portion of meetings appropriately, I will end the comment session early. Last but not least, applause is not allowed under any circumstances. Please refrain from applauding, cussing, and side conversations. With that being said, the floor is open.
Good evening. My name is Brooks Rule. I'm a Downers Grove resident. I'm also a director on the Downers Grove Public Library Foundation and chair of the Friends of Library Committee. If you didn't know, February is Love Your Library Month, which coincides with our recent announcement that the DGPL Foundation will oversee the Friends Group. The DGPL Friends of the Library support, advocate for, and love their library. This is a collective which understands and appreciates the library's value to our care. I hope you all can feel the friendship and love for the library tonight as part of our Fill the Room with Friends initiative. There's buttons still by the door if anyone wants to grab one on the way out. Uniting the Foundation with Friends aligns with our shared dedication to enhancing the library's resources beyond taxpayer support. We envision a renewed focus on Friends, a group which has a rich 70-year history of supporting the Downers Grove Public Library. As part of this collaboration, the Foundation has set an ambitious goal of achieving over 100 reoccurring donors this year. We're encouraging our friends to visit the Foundation website, set up a reoccurring monthly donation to help provide essential funding for extraordinary gifts and sustain the ongoing support for the Library's social work program. Thank you all.
Good evening. My name is Kylie Spahn, and I am a resident of Downers Grove. I would like to start by stating that I fully support the library director, Julie Millavec, the staff, all programming, and the board members that are here this evening. I am speaking tonight in support of a vote of no confidence against trustee Niemberg for violating Section 2(c) and 2(e) of the Bylaws of Library Trustee of the Village of Downers Grove. The first violation was a serious security breach when Mr. Niemberg sent a confidential email that was intended for trustees only to Mr. James Wall. Mr. Wall attempted to access the confidential document resulting in a security alert. This is a serious breach of confidentiality and library security. In any private or government position, this action would result in immediate termination. The second serious breach occurred on social media when Mr. Niemberg did not differentiate his personal beliefs from the library, and by identifying himself as a library trustee, falsely represented the library in political speech. The only person authorized by the bylaws to represent the library publicly is Director Julie Millavec. He violated two bylaws with this social media comment. Mr. Niemberg has failed in his duties as trustee. Under Section 2(e), the board has an obligation to recommend the removal of Mr. Niemberg as trustee and to request a roll call vote of the Village of Downers Grove commissioners to terminate his appointment. I strongly support this action. Thank you.
Chrisa, at the last board meeting, you publicly rebuked a resident called into question his credibility over the number of phone calls made from the library to the Downers Grove Police Department. The dispute between the resident and you was over the number of calls. What was not in dispute is the fact that calls were made to the Downers Grove Police Department. Nonetheless, you called into question his credibility and opined that the board would have no reason to trust his concerns in the future. I have provided evidence, email evidence, of Julie and Jen lying. The president of the board, Swatna, emailed me on Saturday, February 17th requesting that I send her the email evidence. I found her quest curious, since I have provided the evidence to this board on numerous occasions. Nonetheless, I forwarded the email evidence to all the board members. So, all of you have the evidence, yet this board will not censor Julie and Jen for lying. This board has been in possession of the evidence of their lying since July, and you still do nothing. Chrisa, when Julie and Jen lie, no public rebuke of them from you. Chrisa, what of your credibility? This board prattles on about the importance of ethical behavior, but it is just talk. It is just virtue signaling. When confronted with actual unethical behavior by your fellow progressives, this board refuses to do what is right. Ironically, you want to censure Bill Nyberg for making me aware of a public document, the long-awaited window painting policy. Why do you not want the residents of Downers Grove to see a public document before it is voted on? This is just one more deceitful behavior on the part of Julie and this board. Julie, what has happened to your fame and transparency?
Please don't address the director. You need to be addressing the trustees.
Turning to you, David. At the last board meeting, we could not help but notice that when you spoke, you constantly turned to Julie as if pleading for her approval. You give the impression of being frightened of running afoul of Julie. Swatna, when you read over the error-filled land acknowledgement statement, Julie looks at you with a condescending smile. The way that most of you grovel toward Julie, with the exception of board member Bill Nyberg, reminds me of the novel One Flew Over the Cuckoo's Nest. Parallels between the novel and this board are uncanny. For those of you unfamiliar with the novel, here is a brief overview. The story takes place in an Asane asylum where the compliant patients are ruled over by a dominarian and tyrant nurse named Nurse Ratchet. This board reminds me of the compliant appeasing patients in the Asane asylum. Julie, you are reminding me of the tyrant.
You need to stop addressing Julie.
Nurse Ratchet. It is comical how all of you bow to Julie, with the exception of Bill. The rest of you goose-step to the commands of Director Julie. All of you but Bill have your pronouns listed on the website. Only Bill questions the library's spending and budget. The rest of you just go along with Julie. You will not even second a motion that asks this board to look over construction costs or whether the library should have an annual contract with a vendor. This library had a cash reserve of $1.4 million in 2020, and by 2025, the cash reserve will be down to $78,000. Julie and the board referred to the land acknowledgement statement as a living document, an evolving document. Julie, you stated that when the LAS was first created...
Okay, enough. You've addressed her three times. I didn't ask you not to, so you can stop now.
...was that it would be a continuous work in progress.
Mr. Wall, your comments are done.
Forever being revised.
We're going to do this again. All right, your comments are done.
However, when the board member Nyberg made...
You are out of order, sir.
...to revise the land acknowledgement statement.
Stop!
You stated your opposition.
All right, everyone else can remain quiet. You may leave now.
It would have on library staff.
These words played to you for quite some time. You're allowed to leave now.
Perhaps you should have thought about...
No, you need to stop with your mouth.
...your staff.
You can also leave.
...land acknowledgement statement. But we can all ascertain the real reason to your sudden reversal of revising the land acknowledgement. Swatna, why don't you stop this? Stop them, I'm talking. I've got five minutes. It is because you have vowed into a manner you disagree with. Once again, Julie, your intolerance rears its ugly head.
Your five minutes are up.
Julie, you lie. You are deceitful.
Your five minutes are on, Mr. Wall.
To sum it up, your behavior is unprofessional and despicable. Observing the behavior of this board over the last several months, your behavior seems to be contagious. This board knows that you have lied on multiple occasions, and your compliant minions do nothing. I don't want you to do the right thing and call for them to be censured.
No applause, no applause! You know what?
I'd just like to say that I appreciate everybody in this room who is abiding by the rules that were clearly stated at the beginning of the meeting, which are not hard to understand. I am grateful for the opportunity to speak, and I am grateful for all that the library does, and I won't take up any more time so we can actually talk about positive ways to improve our community. Thank you.
I'm not going to go over the rules again. I don't want to hear anything from anyone. I need everyone to abide by the rules I set forward. It's not that hard!
Take a valium.
Get out of here right now!
Just relax, let those people...
You shut up!
Whoa!
Yes, yes, I said it. Yes, I said it. Totally. What happened with me?
She's out of order. She's out of order. Let people speak, that's why they're here. They're here, I'm not leaving. Okay? I want to speak, now go.
I'm going to move for a five-minute recess.
Go.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Yes.
You're not voting, sir, it's the trustees. All right, we'll be back at 7:20. All right, we are going to resume public comment starting at 7:32. We have 15 minutes. We have 15 minutes of comment so far, so we will go until 7:47.
Thank you, okay. First off, I'd like to say my full intention, I literally pulled up the ISLA rules earlier, attempting to stay within all bounds. I will attempt to not say anyone's name, I understand that. That is fully my intention, please forgive me if I misstep. To start, last meeting, there was a comment made by unnamed person on this board that was, "I have not gone back and read, or listened to, or looked at the meetings prior to when I was a board member." I thought that was really interesting, right? I've been coming to these for like three or four months now, and that was strange to me. I'm only 26 years old, but I've been involved with four corporate boards, and related to those four corporate boards, I always go back and I look at the minutes and the presentations before I was a member on the board, because I recognize I'm only 26 and I need to learn something from those that came before me, right? That comment was made and it was surprising to me. The first meeting I ever came to four months ago, I came up here and I gave a speech about how I thought there was a lack of institutional control by this group. You can find it if you all want, just go back a couple months and you can find it online, these are all recorded, it's great that they're recorded, because when we're in incidents, it's right there. Like, the police could go look at it, they can see what happened. It's awesome they're recorded, but that also means you have an obligation to go watch them, especially if you're on the board, right? So I gave this speech about a lack of institutional control on this board. Does anybody think that's true? Kind of seems like it the first 30 minutes of being here today. I'm not trying to take one side or the other, just sitting in this room, it feels like there's a lack of institutional control. Definitely feels that way. I don't know what to attribute it to, I'm only 26 years old, right? It's hard for me to figure it out, I gotta go back and watch some more board meetings. So what I did is I went and I looked at the last eight board meetings that are recorded online, listened to all of them. It's been fascinating. Before going and giving you a brief history, I want to go into what's happened so far today quickly. First, the order of operations here makes no sense. What was said by a board member earlier today is, "Everybody wants to hear about the resolution that's happening today," so we're going to put that at the end. How does that make any sense at all?
We're putting it at the beginning.
Is this... How does parliamentary procedure work? Is this...
You're just wrong.
And so to go step two on this, a comment was made during the last meeting that was, "I don't understand parliamentary procedure." That's somebody on the board said that. They said they don't know parliamentary procedure, and then they just outbursted at me just now. Clearly, they don't understand parliamentary procedure. Lack of institutional control, let's keep going. Burning through the budget is something that was just mentioned in a prior speech that the speech I did, that's fine. Burning through the budget is something that I've seen the actual records of, and it's true. Like, the fund is very low right now, and it's getting lower for this board. It's been mentioned numerous times. Fun fact, folks, like, that's going to be a levying on your taxes, that's why I moved to Clement Hills and I don't live here. Right? Let's keep taking a step through. Yelling at constituents and saying, "Shut up," I won't name who did that, but everybody in this room knows it, they just heard it. Like, you can rise to something higher than that, right? Come on, you sit on a board, you're important. Please rise up. They might not be able to, but come on, you have to be able to. And so I gave a very brief history on why it matters today. I went back and I looked at all these recordings, and there's been a man who's gotten up here the last year, eight meetings have gone by, about five or six of them he's spoken. The reason he's spoken is he tried to paint windows about a year ago. Let's keep this very simple. There was a process he had to go through. The library board president, etc., told him, "Hey, you need to go through this process." He said, "Great, what's the process?" They gave him the process, he said, "This seems really difficult to go through this process, does everybody do this process?" He looked into it and said, "Hey, that group that painted the windows before me, or right after me, I can't remember the details, but go watch the videos, they're all public knowledge." That group, did they go through the process? And it was said to them, "Yes, they did." So what did he do? He filed a Freedom of Information Act. If you don't know what that is, I didn't, I'm only 26 years old, I had to go look it up, right? What that is, is you go through the government to get access to the records of the folks sitting in front of you, where they have to turn over legally their emails to you. And when he did that, he found that they lied to him. It wasn't true that the other group went through the process. I went through these videos and I tried to see, "When did you guys address this?" And you didn't. Like, after we do this public period of comments, you go and you respond to us. You didn't address it. And he's asked four different times for censuring of a member of this board, I'm not allowed to name, but a member of this board. Four different times. It's never been addressed by this board. You can go watch the videos. Never been addressed. Tonight, the reason it matters is they are about to censure a member of this board who is not even here to defend himself. Whether it's his choice or your choice, I don't know, right? It hasn't been said, that's fine. Leave that aside. You are about to go censure someone about the painting of the windows because he sent the document this constituent wanted almost a year ago. He sent the documents now. It's a serious violation of security, right? Is what you just said earlier. And so, my question is, without taking sides on that issue, should he be censured, should he not be censured? Why have you not admitted in a FOIA act that you lied? You had to turn these documents over because of a FOIA, and there was a member sitting in front of me right now, I will not name, who lied. That has not been said on the last eight videos I watched. Can you just admit it? Like, ah, my hand's up, I've lied before, sorry, I'm not proud, but I've done it, I've made mistakes. I've stolen, I've lied, I've done some bad stuff, I'm going to have to tell my son about that one day. Like, it's true, right? Like, everybody around, hopefully you can all say the same, right? It shouldn't be that hard to admit.
There are five minutes.
Thank you very much for the time, and I hope that you respond to his plea before you go ahead and censure someone else.
Yep, there are five minutes.
Thank you.
No applause!
My name is Laura Kamidowski. I'm a long-term Downers Grove resident. I enjoy the library. I thank all of the board members here for really, you know, doing a job that probably no one wants to do with all of this kind of attack, I feel, on the library board. I feel like people are attacking it for a number of reasons. I support inclusivity, I support equity, I support the land acknowledgement, I support LBGTQ. I don't like to see this kind of meeting, it's really sad, I think this is my town, I don't know, it's just sad. So, I'm here to say I support what you guys are doing, and I want to see this be a better place. I can't imagine the attacks coming for these things against the people they're coming against. And the land acknowledgement is important for all of us, Indigenous people and everyone. It's what happened here, and why are you scared of what really happened here? I don't know. Thank you.
Ed Brainerd, resident. I'd like to contrast the Downers Grove Public Library land acknowledgement statement with the land acknowledgement statement from Glen Ellen. Here is the entirety of the Glen Ellen statement. The Glen Ellen Public Library is grateful for its place in the village of Glen Ellen and the land that we are able to inhabit. We acknowledge the peoples who were here long before the village was formed, the Ojibwe, the Odawa, and the Pato-Awami, who are also known as the Council of Three Fires, others such as the Ochithi, Sakawin, Kickapoo, Peoria, Miami, Sauk, Fox, and Linai also settled on and moved through this land. The people of these tribes cared for this land as stewards of the rivers, the wildlife, the plants which flourished. They inhabited the villages in the area, including those in what are now Churchill Woods and Marburyton. As an organization whose mission is to serve the community as a vibrant center for accurate information, robust learning, and personal discovery, the Glen Ellen Public Library wants to ensure that we tell with integrity the history of the land that we now inhabit. We are committed to offering materials, books, DVDs, etc., and programs that accurately reflect the history and present-day lives of the Indigenous community. We will use our physical and digital spaces to share first-voice information. We will offer programming in partnership with Indigenous cultures who were here before and are here today. We will offer the space for all to tell their stories, and we will listen. This statement is made in good faith, we recognize that it may need to be adopted to more accurately reflect the lived experiences of the Indigenous people in this area. This statement is fluid and will change as needed. The Glen Ellen Public Library thinks Gina Rixus of Trickster Culture Center, who shared her time and knowledge to craft this statement. This is in stark contrast to the Downers Grove Public Library statement that tries to cram 200 years of history with political commentary into five pages. Yes, the Downers Grove land acknowledgement statement is five pages. It goes well beyond acknowledging the land in Downers Grove, and it totally contradicts the stories of our local Native people, like the family photos and history of experiences in Indian schools and the voting expertise of the Indian culture. I suggest the land acknowledgement statement be amended to the opening statement with information on where to find more information for people to do their own research. No additional time would be needed by staff at all. Short and sweet is better than long and long. This being Black History Month, I'd like to end with a quote from Dr. Thomas Sowell. "The real danger to us all is when government not only exercises the power that have voted to it, but exercises additional powers that we have never voted to give it. That's when public servants become public masters. That's when government itself has stepped over the line." Thank you.
Ed Brainerd, Downers Grove resident. Here we are again, speaking to the board regarding an unsafe library environment for our children. I've been addressing this issue for almost two years, yet the library has done little to nothing to further secure our library for our children. Finally, however, a board member, Ms. Dougherty, stepped up last month to address my concerns. But does she address the major scary incidents which have required the police to come to the library for such things as open drug use, open alcohol use, intoxicated individual in the children's room, viewing porn, fighting, throwing chairs, throwing books? No. Does she address any safety issues within the library? Barely a mention. Does she address what the board and library director are doing or planning to do to improve or increase security and safety within the library? No. Rather, this board member, comments from last month were mostly in defense of the library, claiming that this Downers Grove police report that I used was providing scary misinformation regarding the incidents at the library, overstating major incidents. Our board member claims that most of the police visits are for minor issues, such as animal sightings, incidents outside the library, in the parking lot, by the church, before or after library hours. Well, maybe these calls after library hours are because of the individuals now camped out, sleeping in front of the library overnight. But does she mention any of the most concerning visits in that same report are those mentioned before? Could it be that this board member is providing misinformation by understating scary incidents requiring the police to come to the library? For example, and again from the same Downers Grove police report, a dispute, juvenile problems, assault, dispute, disturbance, trespassing. Five separate suspicious situations visit one leading to an arrest, disturbance, property concern, juvenile problem, intoxicated person, disturbance, loitering, criminal damage. Eighteen major police visits to the library not mentioned by this board member. This board member seems to imply that my numbers are wrong and hers are right, deny, accuse, look over here, nothing to see, the library is safe. Notice that. This board member... This board member further implies that my so-called misinformation by overstating police incidents are scaring library patrons. Well, if there are moms with babies, ten-year-old schoolchildren in the library alongside individuals possibly doing drugs, drinking, viewing porn, fighting, swearing, some now wearing ankle monitors. Well, yes, they should be scared. The library's number-one responsibility is to make the library safe for our children. Cameras, temporary suspensions are not enough. You're failing us. The library therefore remains unsafe for our children.
We are at 7:47, which was the end of public comments. We can finish up, yeah, we can take the last four.
I suggest we extend.
You want to make a motion, Dave?
I move that we extend for the people who are currently in line.
All right, wait a second. I'll say. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the motion is passed. We'll go ahead and take the last four in line. Thank you.
Real quick, I attended the board meetings the last eighteen or so months, and the concerns expressed recently regarding police calls have evolved over time. The last time I heard these concerns to be discussed, well, concerns to be discussed, it was that there was the assertion that the director of the library was hiding police incidents at the library. Nobody has denied that as a public space, the library is visited by anybody within our society. Some of them have ankle monitors. Some of them look at porn, both in the library and outside the library. They do drugs. Nobody wants to see these things in the library. As a matter of fact, the library has policies against them. And we've got Ian here tonight, who helps, you know, with the monitors to enforce the rules at the library. But to say that the library has done nothing, I feel we've just been hearing goalposts being moved rather than actually genuine concerns being expressed. That said, my name is Mike Ryan. I've been a Downers Grove resident and DGPL cardholder for the last ten years. I want the board and staff to know that their service at the Downers Grove Public Library is genuinely appreciated by my family. My wife and I read books with our children every night before bedtime and have done so since both of my boys have been infants. Almost all of the books that we've read to them came from the Downers Grove Public Library. When we were stuck at home during COVID, my boys would play pretend library with the stacks of books that my wife had brought home from the library. And I can, when I think about that memory, I can hear my oldest beeping, making the beep sound, or just going to stand and watch. Over the years, my family has borrowed thousands of books, attended innumerable storytimes, Lego builds, make and creates, and other events at the library. Like many others, the Downers Grove Public Library was a deciding factor when we chose to move to the village of Downers Grove. So, thank you all, to all the staff and board members who make this possible. As I mentioned, I've been coming to board meetings for the last eighteen months, and in that time, I've not noticed trustee Nidberg say anything remotely positive about our library once. I've never heard him promote nor mention attending any library events or programming in his trustee comments. My understanding is that prior to joining the library board, he didn't even have a library card. When I reflect upon the content of his tirade that he delivered at the September board meeting, as well as his comments and motions since then, I have the feeling that his service on a library board is not one born out of love or appreciation for the library. I can only speculate, but it certainly makes me question motives. I do want to say that I support the resolution to censor trustee Nidberg, but not for the reasons that I've already mentioned. To me, the reason for censuring the trustee is very simple. After having his motion democratically rejected at the last meeting, he stated to other trustees that he would no longer work with them on library business. In my mind, he has abdicated his position, and the responsibility of the board is to vote to censure. Thank you.
My name is Robin Triloff, and I'm a Downers Grove resident, taxpayer, and a voter. Additionally, I hold a Downers Grove Public Library card, which I regularly use. Over the past eighteen months, our library has faced relentless, frivolous, accusatory complaints at every trustee board meeting. The library staff and trustees have endured dogged, threatening, and hate-filled personal attacks during meetings within the library premises, at their homes, and even on the public streets. These onslaughts of threats and aggression are not only vile and offensive, but also completely inappropriate. As the literal, figurative, and democratic social center of our community, our five-star library cannot afford to be damaged in this way. So, as we approach the end of Library Lovers Month, I want to express my heartfelt reasons for loving this library. Our library serves as a vibrant community hub, bringing people together in a space that fosters learning, socializing, and the exploration of new ideas. It is a place where curiosity thrives and minds are enriched. The library offers something for everyone, from the written word and live performances, to our exhibits, hands-on projects, social services, and access to online resources. Beyond its physical offerings, I cherish this library because it provides a sense of community. Being part of a community gives me a feeling of belonging, a connection to something greater than myself. By welcoming individuals from all walks of life, for me, the library community becomes a sanctuary of peace and inclusivity in our Muslim world. For these reasons, the Downers Grove Public Library holds a special place in my heart.
Noel Manley, Darien, Illinois. The optics on the resolution of censure are awful. The resolution paints with broad strokes, allegation, and innuendo that are not listed or unsubstantiated. You list personal attacks, name-calling, harassment, intimidation, but you don't give specific instances. Are you talking about an employee who asked for an investigation? They prompted you to go get an attorney? You say that he violated the precepts of good governance. Do you mean he pointed out political bias in this management of this library? You cite Article IV, Section E, in the library's bylaws, which state, "Failure to fulfill responsibilities. Board may recommend removal of a trustee to the village council by roll call for failure to fulfill the duties of office." There is no standard or measure articulated here. It is subjective and likely unconstitutional. As I said, the optics on this censure resolution are bad. This is an unelected body, overstepping its authority by creating a kangaroo court. That is a court where only unsubstantiated and biased allegations are made, due process is violated, and strict conformity enforced. I strongly urge the body to table this resolution, or at least have the decency to wait for member Nidberg to be here. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Warner Keenkin. I'm the resident of Downers Grove. I'd like to give a brief history of this country because it's been referenced so many times before. In 1619, the Europeans brought the first slaves to this country. Slavery and segregation would last for the next 350 years. In 1776, the United States declared its independence as a colony from Britain, a European country. In 1803, the United States purchased the Louisiana Territory from another European country, France. Between 1846 to 1848, the United States engaged in a war with another Spanish colony, Mexico, to obtain the significant western portion of the United States. In the 1830s, the United States hired many Asians as contract workers to work on plantations, mines, and build railroads. Many of these Asians were escaping wars in Asia between European colonists. I laud the library and its land acknowledgement statement as the whole United States was the result of colonization. Red Cloud Indian School, a Jesuit school, has begun a process to reverse the damage done through the process described in the land acknowledgement. Red Cloud is a member of the Lakota tribe. The reservation in South Dakota is located in the Coors County in the United States. The Lakota Nation and the Jesuits have begun the process of truth and healing to address the wrongs. The first phase is to admit the wrongdoing and to increase the transparency of the wrongs that have been done. The next phase focuses on education leading to insight into the impact of this trauma historically and to the present day upon Indigenous people. I fear that we are nowhere close to even touching the second phase. Secondly, the library has been criticized, and I think we have an excellent resource here, and the staff has been wonderful to work with. However, it is the first time in my long life that I have ever known a library to become a social service agency. You are frequently criticized for people coming here who are mentally ill, substance abuse, et cetera. Those are people who reside in the community. Before I retired, I worked on the west side of Chicago as a director of an outpatient mental health clinic. This was in the Austin community. We frequently utilized the library. However, when there were mental health issues, when there were substance abuse issues, other issues that were talked about here in this library, we did not ask the library board to deal with it. I as the mental health center dealt with it. I would welcome this group of people who have been highly critical of you as a board to begin working with the DuPage County Mental Health Division to address a lot of the issues regarding homelessness, mental health, and living arrangements. Thank you.
Next up, we have trustee comments.
All right, I'll start. As a trustee, I am privileged to be given the responsibility to serve our community. It is an opportunity I do not take lightly, an opportunity to advocate for the library and everything that it means for a strong, healthy community. In this role, I've spoken with many patrons, patrons of all ages, backgrounds, and opinions. One such opportunity was a couple of weeks ago at the Board of Trustees, where we reported hosted a coffee. If you were here, you'll remember that it was a very cold Saturday morning, fifteen degrees, in fact. But people still came to our coffee. A patron who grew up using this library but has since gone off to college stopped in to say how much the library meant to them growing up. Another, that the staff was always quick to help when needed. But more telling that the attendance at our coffee was at the timing coincided with Saturday morning storytime. Stroller after stroller rolling in, excited toddlers running towards the children's section, and I counted four early-morning princesses walking in. After the coffee, I decided to make my way over to the children's area to chat with parents, grandparents, and guardians. And not surprisingly to the children, who are very excited to share with me their books, their day, and their shoes. A small sampling of the conversations. The library is our favorite place. We have a routine. We stop here, then the park, then naptime. My little ones get dressed up every Saturday and costume before we come here. We're so grateful for the library. We're so lucky to live in Downers Grove that has a great library. I get to buy seventeen books on the machine. My book matches my brother. I don't know what that means. The librarians are so helpful. The librarians are very kind. These people are so patient. When I asked them if they felt welcome and safe, every single one said yes. There was no hesitation. The energy in the children's area was pure joy. Granted, there were a few temper tantrums, but happy people who felt safe and welcome in their library. Reading is an act of empathy. It allows us to understand and embrace the experience of others. That's a quote by Lamar Burton. "I grew up in the seventies and eighties, and the show Reading Rainbow was a huge part of my life. Each episode would take the viewer, each episode would take the viewer, my computer wanted to do something there, on a journey through a book. Sometimes in new lands, meeting new people, fostering understanding and empathy. I'm a firm believer in early reading and free access to books and resources for all. I was thrilled to hear the intergovernmental agreement between District 58 and DGPL. I remember months ago, in the early planning sessions of our strategic plan, a very honest District 58 teacher coming forward and telling us that some of her students do not have library cards because of their addresses. And therefore, limiting their accessibility to get books and resources. The staff here at DGPL rose up, as they always do to the occasion, to figure out how best to serve our community and our children. With the Children's Services Manager Allison Reynolds' leadership and the support of other staff and the commitment of District 58, this is becoming a reality. All District 58 students will have access to this award-winning library. The summer reading program, one of the best in Chicagoland, that's my opinion, but also well-known, heard that there was a need to provide information and materials in other languages. Understanding that the demographics of Downers Grove are evolving, the staff worked together, researching which languages were most requested by District 99 and District 58, and got materials in those languages. Once again, our staff working together, working with other Downers Grove entities, finding solutions, putting the needs of this community first. I tell you all this to emphasize the significance of librarians and the power and value they have in our community. From my own years as an early reader, to being a mom with my littles at storytime, to my children becoming teenagers who use this library and its resources on their own, and of course, the past few years as a trustee, I have learned how vital this library and libraries are in combating false narratives and misinformation, and how critical they are in supporting our community. Thank you to everyone for being here. Your presence here tonight is a testament to the value and significance of the public library.
I'm Dave Humphries. Some of you heard me say that my chief job as a library trustee is to stay out of the way of the staff. I don't say this lightly. We, as a board, govern the library. We set policy and raise money by levying taxes to support the library. We hire a professional library director, who in turn hires professional staff to operate the library. Now, I've been a library trustee for a long time. During those years, I've tried to represent the community of Downers Grove to the best of my ability, followed state laws and library trustee bylaws, and helped to hire, especially recently, outstanding staff leadership for our library. That doesn't mean we always agree, among our board members or with our director and staff. But we discuss, we negotiate, we make decisions, and the staff operates a fine library. We have, they have, with a little help from us, built a five-star library which is nationally recognized for being superb. I can't thank them enough. And based on recent surveys and my observations, the vast majority of community members agree. And the community participates through letters, emails, feedback notes. The staff listens and considers them all. And our Board of Trustees, at meetings like this one, always include an opportunity for public comment where you can tell us what's on your mind, within certain limitations, certain restrictions, which are under state law. And you do tell us what's on your mind. We thank you for that. It's an important part of the democratic process. And we listen. Many changes in programs and policies originate from our community. That's the way democracy should work. But recently, too often in our culture, public comment has degenerated from civil discourse to personal attacks and name-calling to staff. Unfortunately, this has spread to our library. Staff members who are the face of the library every day have had to endure challenges and criticisms and worse, including words I can't even use. criticisms and worse, including words I can't even use here. Board members have been stopped on the street and publicly lambasted. Perhaps some level of this goes with the territory, but I strongly believe that a line has been crossed. I don't mind people who disagree with me. That's how we learn. But friends, colleagues, and fellow community members can disagree civilly, calmly, even firmly, but not aggressively, antagonistically, disruptively. Sometimes it even reaches the level of verbal assault. This must stop. Or our five-star library is in danger. Or even democracy is threatened. If you can't be friendly, at least be civil. I will listen, take notes, consider, and act as I believe is best for the library and for the community, but not when I feel attacked. Please try. Thank you.
About three-quarters of what I was going to say has just been said. Thank you, Bernal and Dave. But I want to reiterate, there are people who come to these meetings who are contributing to the very problems that they purport to be complaining about by sheer lack of decency and good manners, and who say they're not safe at the library because there are reports of an occasional encounter with some troubled person or something that's written on the library website or in the land acknowledgement, and they feel unsafe. Well, how about the staff and trustees? Who can't go down the street without, as Dave said, verbal abuse, harassment, threats on the street, sometimes in our homes, on social media? How about minorities and LBTGV2 Qs who have heard hate speech month after month after month at these meetings? That sense of entitlement has no place in civil discourse at this library or any other public institution, and we've had enough. You think a handful of books that nobody is forced to read are creating a bad role model for your children? Look at your own behavior. I also want to clarify a couple of things that were said tonight. One is draft documents are not public documents. The other, and I've said this before, the director of the library is not a member of the board. She is the sole employee of the board. The board has authority to deal with anything that we think are performance issues with the director, and then down the line, she would deal with any performance issues with her staff. Even were we so inclined, and sometimes we have been, to chide her for something in the annual evaluation or as various issues come up, those are employee privacy issues. There is not going to be a public censure. We don't have the authority to censure a member of the staff. That's not our job. Our job is to evaluate, to hire and evaluate the performance of the director, and we have been doing that. We do that in executive sessions among ourselves. You've seen us go into those sessions periodically. And then there are discussions with the director as to things that we see that need improving. That's the process, and that will remain the process. Chris, anything with you?
Okay. Guess so. I had a couple of comments first after reading the director's report and some of the information in the board packet. I was really pleased to see some of the recent programming around information literacy, knowing your source was a program that was offered earlier this month. I wasn't able to attend, which I was disappointed, but I was really excited to see that that information and the speakers were available to our community because I find that issue very important to me. I also am excited to hear about the upcoming management team planning retreats, digging into major spaces. That's very exciting. It's something we've been talking a lot about in terms of the strategic plan, and I hope that once, you know, when that's over, you all will share what you've learned with us so that we can all go out and learn a little bit more about that as well. The IMLS guide that you were provided via email was really interesting to read tonight. I'm looking forward to hearing more about how we can employ some of those techniques here at our library. Before I get into like my prepared remarks, I wanted to say that I was disappointed that some of my remarks from last meeting were misconstrued as denying the incident reports that we all have access to. I did not intend to downplay those at all. In fact, I think it's important that we recognize the challenges that the library, staff, and our community, and the police actually deal with here in our community. I think that's very important. What I did intend to do was call out the differences in facts that were presented in different venues with the intention to harm the reputation of the library and our director specifically. That is what disturbed me, and that is what I was specifically calling out. So I hope you do continue your interest in the library and the safety of our patrons and our staff and our board members and our director. It's a very important part of what we do, and I'm glad that so many of you are here today to hear us. So those of you who have heard me speak at these meetings before know that hearing from diverse voices, coming from a place of curiosity, and upholding the facts are very important to me in terms of person, and particularly as a member of this board, which is really quite a coincidence because in fact, being inclusive, promoting lifelong learning, and acting with integrity are just a few of the library's core values. You can see those on our website. They're the values that we as board members are sworn to promote when we take our positions here. Those values are not only important to me, but also should be significant guideposts for all library trustees. Our bylaws, which I'll reference a few times during these remarks, which were most recently reviewed and approved by all trustees back in August of 2023, state that one of the primary functions of the library board of trustees is to promote the purposes, values, and services of the library. It's a primary function of the group you see sitting before you. Unfortunately, I am no longer convinced that all of us are committed to this principle. I agree with Mr. Mamling's statement that the optics are bad for the resolution that we present here tonight. Wait, wait, let me explain why. There are some people who will say, and have already said, that, you know, the discussion here tonight will have to do with trustee Neenberg's opinions or perspectives as the only conservative on the board, or that our motion conflicts with First Amendment rights to free speech, both of which are untrue and very unfortunate, especially for conservatives. Let me explain. Just as Bill may be the only conservative on this board, he's also unique in a few other ways. He's the only one at the board who doesn't have a Downers Grove library card. He's the only one of us who hasn't volunteered to participate in community outreach events. As far as I can tell, he's the only one of us who has not availed themselves of the numerous learning opportunities that are offered to us as trustees through rails or state library system to advance our ability to do that job in the north of the library. He's the only one who regularly interrupts our board president and treats her with disrespect. And he's the only one of us who attempted to leak confidential draft documents, as Marty pointed out, to an individual who is known to have sworn at one of our staff members after our last meeting. None of these facts has to do with the difference of opinion and has everything to do with that basic requirement of trustees or our bylaws to act in the best interest and uphold the purpose, values, and services of the library. I will also say to all of you here, if any of my fellow board members did any of those things I just cited, Bill, for being the singular example, I would absolutely be sitting here doing the same thing. And when I say that it's unfortunate that he's the only conservative, I say this because I know other conservatives and I know other Catholics who are and who have been perfectly capable of participating on this board and treating their fellow trustees, the library director, and the library staff with respect. I know other individuals who are conservatives who care deeply about this library, who engage with it, who appreciate its accomplishments, even if they don't agree 100% with the leadership. I know other individuals who are conservative who would be able to act in a way that does not undermine the values and the purpose of the library. In other words, I wouldn't want the fact that someone is or is not a conservative to interfere with future trustees' perceived ability to do our job and to act in the best interest of the library. So in my mind, this is either a political thing nor a First Amendment thing. It's a matter of ethical behavior and the ability for each of us to uphold our role in a way that moves this library forward and work to create a place for all members of our community that has race, political party, or socioeconomic status. I will also say that while it is absolutely our role as trustees to support our library, that doesn't mean blind loyalty. Asking questions, getting curious, and surfacing community concerns are all part of our responsibility as board members. I also believe it's our responsibility to refrain from statements that are untrue or that can easily be proven one way or another, so that it can lead to research. For example, in September of last year, trustee Neenberg stated that during his comments throughout the land acknowledgement, that the library hadn't, quote, "done us any significant Native American programming." Spending 10 minutes on the library's website, looking through Discovery's newsletter, or reading the monthly department reports that were provided, revealed the fact that the library had done several types of programs about Native and religious people for a wide range of ages and interests. So as I said in my comments last month, I would expect anyone making a statement like this, whether it's a trustee or a member of the public, to spend those 10 minutes, getting curious, and understanding, ensuring what they said is in fact true. But I would especially expect it from a board member whose very role it is to be aware of library programs, read the board materials, and generally refrain from undermining or telling falsehoods about the library. In fact, I think it goes again beyond my own personal expectation to repeat my earlier refrain, our bylaws state trustees should act in the best interest of the library. But I wouldn't want to let all these facts get in the way of narrative, as we've been accused of before. So let me provide you with a narrative that I would like to see this board move out. We're a group of diverse individuals who life experiences represent the dynamism and resilience of the Downers Grove community. We take into account the expertise of the library's staff, the perspectives of community members, and the outlook for public libraries as a whole to steer DGPL into a more innovative future, to address issues as they may arise, and steward this amazing community resource so that our children and our children's children can enjoy it in the future. And yes, I would like to see the facts of these meetings, behaviors of my fellow trustees, and the outcomes of our strategic plans support this narrative. And given our current board composition, I'm not sure it's possible.
First of all, I want to apologize for the way public comment transpired this evening. I pride myself on being someone that likes to always move forward with respect and consideration first and foremost, and it's very frustrating when that is not returned. I find it interesting that people are allowed to shout and heckle at us, but when I get frustrated, I'm the problem. That's, I said it. I don't want to spend a lot of time addressing people's comments specifically, but I do want to make a couple of notes regarding, I did not catch the 26-year-old's name, but he did mention several times he was 26. I did just want to let you know a couple of things. I do remember your comments the first time you made them, and I do remember you leaving before I had a chance to respond then. You had a comment regarding our inability to manage our finances because our tax revenue was zero. And what I wanted to just let you know is that in Downers Grove, taxes are collected twice, once in June and once in September. So January through that first collection, you will see zero tax revenue. That is why that was zero. And if you, I know you mentioned recordings and watching them, so if you want to look back at your own comments, that would be awesome. You also made a comment about the censure item being moved to the last part. That's false. For those of you that were in the room, if you were around 7 o'clock when we made the motion, that was actually moved up to be next on our agenda, not last, like you had misquoted. And last but not least, I specifically stated that the board, the comments were not to be addressed to the board director. I never said anything about not saying board members' names, so I'm curious where that interpretation was made. But again, I don't want to go into details about every single comment you made that was inaccurate. I just wanted to address those quick ones off the top of my head. Now onto my prepared comments. I wanted to start my comments off this evening similarly to Bernal and Dave by thanking those of you that were able to attend the coffee with the trustees event we held a few weeks ago. It was our second time doing this, and it is always a pleasure to chat with individuals in a more relaxed setting. This is a very uncomfortable setting for myself. After the event ended, I had a few minutes to walk around and check out new books before heading out. As I stood in the main walkway, I had the pleasure of watching our youngest patrons with their caretakers excitedly walking in for storytime, one of them being dressed up as Elsa. I miss the other three princesses now. It made me reflect on my time as a mom of two littles. When we moved here in 2014 and not knowing solely Downers Grove, the library was one of the first places I came. Our visits were always much-needed breaks from our house, especially during the cold months. They helped foster my children's love for reading, and today, as middle schoolers, they love coming to the library on their own. And it is one of the few places I trust them to be on their own. Since becoming a trustee in 2017, I've had the opportunity to truly understand how much work and passion goes into driving this institution forward and into five-star territory. Make no mistake, what we have in this community is truly like no other. The staff is constantly evolving with the changing needs of the community, whether it's providing the most comprehensive collection of programs to pivoting during pandemic times. When safety concerns were raised by the community, the library acted quickly to enhance their safety protocols, increase cameras, build an even stronger relationship with DGPD, and most importantly, gain insight on how to best help those in our community that are in need. Staff members have spent countless hours learning about de-escalation techniques and social service assistance, and above all, they have built relationships of trust and compassion with those individuals that are often treated as less than fellow humans. I am bravely concerned about the future of this library based on the constant attacks and inaccurate portrayals of security. The constant harassment and abuse of language displayed at many of these meetings towards administrators and staff and board members is leaving the staff themselves concerned for their safety and having many strongly, and having many of these staff members strongly reflecting on their futures here at DGPL. It should come as no surprise to any of you that this would mean a huge loss for our community. It is the staff here at DGPL that make the library what it is, and it would be ignorant to think that our library would continue to thrive as one of the best if we were to lose any of them. All right. Any other public, sorry, trustee comments? All right. In that case, we are doing our shift that we motioned on previously, and that is moving to item 9C, Resolution of Censure.
Before we start the discussion on this and move it on to the table, I want to make one thing very, very clear. At no point has anyone on the library staff had any part in developing this resolution. None, zero, zilch, nada. The first time any member of this library staff saw it was when it was emailed to Caitlin to post on the agenda. I've heard some rumors floating around to the contrary. And I just want to make sure everybody here understands that this is an initiative of the board. With that, I move the resolution on to the table for a vote.
Can we discuss?
Yes.
I think I've said more at this meeting already than I usually do, and I apologize for that, but nothing will approach five minutes. As I said earlier, as a member of the library board, I try to listen to all viewpoints and consider them all, even if I don't see eye to eye with some. Differing ideas make democracy work. We don't have to like everyone, but respect and civil dignity are cornerstones of a society that values all its citizens. However, as members of this library board, we are also called upon to support the mission, the vision, and the values of the library. We are asked to work together according to the state laws and guidelines and library bylaws to uphold and support what has been a nationally recognized library, which, by the by, is seeing higher levels of participation and attendance than I've seen perhaps ever. The library is vital to our community. As a board, we are called upon to work together for the betterment of the library and our community. When a board member abuses their office by violating our bylaws, sharing confidential information- information outside of board meetings, personally attacking other board members, or belittling the work of those who have gone before us in previous iterations of the board, I don't think this reflects well of us, well upon us as a team or as an organization. It certainly doesn't reflect well in terms of our partnership with the library staff. Further, the vitriolic language and often subversive behavior that seems eager to undermine what we have worked on, publicly painting others on our team in a poor light and disparaging their character, has eroded trust and confidence within our library staff, which we are here to support. But it is also exhausting the time and resources of this board. I would ask him, why are you serving on this board? Is it to share in the work of this library and the community? Or is it because you are on a mission to recast the library and fashion it in a way you see fit that agrees with your own worldview, which may or may not share the values, all the values shared in our wider community? I believe, based on what I have heard and witnessed over the past one and a half years, that the truth is the latter, and as such, I don't believe he ought to continue to represent the community as a member of this board. Because of this, I move that the motion on the floor be amended. I move to add the following sentence to the end of the Resolution of Censure under consideration. And I quote, "In light of all these circumstances, we call upon the Downers Grove Village Council to remove Bill Neenberg from the Board of Library Trustees of the Downers Grove Public Library as soon as possible," unquote.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to amend the Resolution of Censure and a second. We'll go ahead and proceed with a roll call vote of the amendment.
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Sladek?
Yes.
And President Gugani?
Yes. Thank you, Scott. All right. The Resolution of Censure has been amended and approved as such. Do we have additional comments?
I'll make one very quick one. I thank you for saying the comments about working together. When I joined this board in 2019, there were two other board members sitting here who we had very different worldviews, very different backgrounds, very different opinions on things. But what we had in common was our role as a trustee and what it meant to be a trustee. We debated issues. Some people have said that we rubber stamped everything. That is not at all true. We would debate, we would discuss, we would sometimes come to solutions, sometimes we'd have the table and issue and come back and discuss it the next time. But we always listened to one another. We always heard one another. We always gave others opportunities to speak. We responded to the surveys that we gave to the community, and that is how we moved our work forward. We never put our egos, our personal agendas, first. We did what was best for this library and what was best for our community. I have been deeply troubled by the misinformation, the unwillingness to work with others, creating false narratives, disrespect for fellow trustees, and especially disrespect for the staff. I'm sad that it had to come to this because we are a board and we want to work together. But Trustee Neenberg will not even acknowledge me by my name. So I...his unwillingness to even acknowledge me leaves it very hard for me to even be able to work with him on any issues.
I'm in agree...I am in agreement with the statements contained in this resolution. Trustee Neenberg has proven time and time again that he lacks the ability to even speak respectfully to some trustees and has demonstrated an unwillingness to work collaboratively with the five other trustees on this board. Before anyone decides to make any assumptions and add a creative spin on the timing of this resolution, I do want to make one thing very clear. The timing of this resolution is based solely on the occurrence of the final incident contained in this resolution, the sharing of confidential information on February 17. Given the severity of this incident, it was decided that action needed to be taken promptly. Unlike village council, this board meets once a month. It is of the utmost importance that these monthly meetings occur on the time that they have been scheduled, not only so that accurate financial recordings are presented, but that we, as trustees, continue to move the business of the library forward. We are not in a position to reschedule and defer topics of discussion based solely on each trustee's individual availability.
Now, I'll move the question to vote.
We'll go ahead and proceed with roll call vote.
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Sladek?
Yes.
President Gugani?
Yes. The Resolution to Censure has been passed. We are popping back up to item number four, Approval of Minutes.
I will move to approve the minutes.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to approve January 24, 2024 meeting minutes as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And all those abstaining? All right. The January 24th approval minutes have been approved as presented. Item number five, Financial Matters, A, January 24 financial report, and B, February 24 instances.
As you can see, we are 8.3% through the year. Of course, our revenue, as expected, is at 0.3%. Again, our revenue is 96% property tax-based and therefore comes in after property taxes are collected in June and September. If you bothered to take a look at the end of 2023 year-end financial reports, we did collect more than 103% of our revenues in 2023. We are at 6.7% expended. That is 8.3% through the year, under 7% expended. The one real outlier in our expenditures is in line 5420, which is insurance. As you all know, as the board, that is an annual premium that is paid in January. And then I just wanted to note for the trustees, I know that you've been asking for some different kinds of financial reports. Beginning in May, we will finally have enough data in Munis, the village's financial software, to be able to start using one of their reports that is a month-to-date report for each month. And I think that you will all...I think you'll enjoy having that in the packet. I think it makes a big difference. Yeah. Unfortunately, it's because we...they didn't...the village did not start putting data into Munis until April of the year that we transferred over. The report does not populate correctly until all the data is populated in the board zone. And that's all I have.
Was that insurance, LIRA?
Yes. That's...that is the LIRA...that is our LIRA, property, liability, volunteer accident, cybersecurity, workers comp. It is the joint self-insurance pool for Illinois Public Libraries that we participate in.
I will move to approve the financials as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the financial matters as presented. Let's go ahead and proceed with the roll call.
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Sladek?
Yes.
President Gugani?
Yes. All right. The financial matters have been approved as presented. Now we're popping down to item eight, Library Director's Report.
There have been a lot of comments made about incident reports, about emails, et cetera. I just want to once again reiterate, as I frequently do, dglibrary.org/Transparency, you will find the FOIA tracker for all of the Freedom of Information Act requests made from this library since 2021, and those are all available on our website, so you can go and read all of the emails for yourself, all of the incident reports that have been FOIA'd. And now, as you can see, if you're looking at our packets, we do include all of the incident reports on a monthly basis as well as an incident report. So go ahead and read it for yourself. I know that there was an incident in early February that you can see on that tracker. We did have an individual who had a mental health episode here in the library. That can happen in any public place. Could have happened in the grocery store, could have happened on the street. Calling the police is our only option. There is no mental health crisis response in DuPage County. There is no one else to call. Our staff handled this situation in an exemplary fashion. Our building operations director was there on the spot, making sure that the individual was as safe as possible for himself and others. Our other managers on duty at the time had made sure that that person had the space that he needed at that time until the police responded and that other patrons remained calm and gave that person space. So beyond that, I do want to just make a quick mention about some things. The DGPD dispatch logs do use the Downers Grove Library as a geographic location, and it is sometimes referenced even when another organization calls. For example, First Congregational United Church of Christ called for an incident that occurred and was occurring on their property. And on the DGPD dispatch log, it is listed, its location is listed, as the Downers Grove Library. There is a full police report about what happened. It's not an incident that actually...so please remember, DGPD, we have no control over what they list on the dispatch log and whether it was the library who called or someone walking through the parking lot who thought they saw someone breaking into a car. It could be anyone. We make sure that if it is anything witnessed by a staff member or reported to a staff member, we make an incident report. And we have all kinds of incident reports. Again, you can read all about it on the transparency page, but I just want to make sure that I say there has been no open drug use in this library. That was conflated by a gentleman who had pulled information from other neighboring libraries, and that was actually an incident at a neighboring library, not here, but it has been reported multiple times by individuals standing up in public comments that that incident happened here. It did not. There has not been a drunk person in our kids' room. Again, I think this is something that was from another library, but not here. There have been open alcohol outside. Yep. A police officer driving by saw someone sitting outside on a bench, opened a little bottle of alcohol and drank it, and so they ticketed that person. There wasn't a library staff member out there at the time. We didn't see it. We cannot control every inch of this very large public building at all times. And any of you who have children in a large house know that it is impossible to control every inch of your space at every moment. And I also want to make sure that we note that the chair-throwing incident was a middle schooler from Downers Grove. So I...to segue on that, we have...Spring is coming, and a lot of our young people are again here in the library, especially on those days off of school. If you know and love a teenager in Downers Grove, particularly our middle school friends, please speak to them about proper etiquette in the library, how to follow the library's rules, because we have had a number of incidents already, particularly on President's Day when the weather was nice and there were an awful lot of them here. That being said, we are also going to be starting to staff a temporary service desk in our teen services area beginning on March 1st, which also happens to be a schoolteacher institute day. So yes, we are going to begin...that's part of our transition to an updated teen area within the library to hopefully keep their energies directed in a very positive way. And just two last things. Look for your newest issue of Discoveries to be delivered any day now. Our annual report is featured, showing as our five-star library continuing its stellar service. And do not forget, our March meeting is off our normal schedule. It is on March 20th to accommodate spring break from the school.
I'm very excited to see the temporary teen desk. And best wishes to you on Friday. All right. Item nine, New Business. A is the Intergovernmental Agreement for Library Cards with Downers Grove School District 58.
And this has been a long time coming, and I'm going to ask our children's services manager, Allison Rennell, to stand up and just say a few words, answer any questions you may have, because she has been leading this project for a long...
For a long time. So actually, this is something that I think Julie and I started talking about in 2018, 2019, and then 2020 happened. So it got a little bit delayed. But luckily, due to changes in Illinois State Law, the Cards for Kids Act, and by policy changes due to the board, we are able to move forward with District 58, an intergovernmental agreement for data sharing in order to start the process of trying to get every child in District 58 a library card. The way our process of...I will tell you, the IGA, that's before you, has been gone through not only by library staff, but our attorney and the school district's attorney. It's going to go through the school board on March 11th, I believe, is what my counterpart at the district told me, and they're confident that they are...they're excited and on board about this as well. We are hoping through...when you...if you have a child in 58 and you go to register your child, you will be able to opt in to participate in this program. Parents still have to give us their consent to give their child in the program. If they opt into it, though, we will take care of it from there. We will make their child a card, and then we will give the parent their child's card without the parent actually having to come in here and do any of the work or talk to anybody, or they're just going to use online resources. They don't even have to come in. They're just going to be given to their card. But one of the reasons why we're doing this with 58 is the library currently has a lot of databases and resources online that we pay for based on our population size. So by getting more cards in the hands of kids, our teachers can now use these databases in their classrooms if children have their cards. So we're really excited about that. The school district is really excited about that because if we're able to make this happen, then we can work with the school district to make sure we're not double dipping on databases so that we are better expending, you know, our database is the same. So we're super excited about this. The district is super excited about this, so I hope that you guys will be excited about it too and approve. Can I answer any questions for you?
I have no questions, but I find it very exciting. This has been a long time coming, and it predates 1918 or 2018.
Yeah. That's the last time I remember talking about it.
Predates it by a lot, in my experience. So this is thrilling.
We're super excited, and then we're going to be also working...we know there are a lot of District 58 students who do not live in Downers Grove or even in unincorporated Downers Grove, who we can now cover, but we are going to be working with our other local libraries to get those children's cards as well so that we can try to get as much universal card signed up as possible. So we're excited. The teachers are excited, the teacher librarians are very excited that we're doing this, too. They use a lot of our resources already as demonstration, but giving the kids the hands-on tools is going to really help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Allison.
Thank you, Allison.
I'll move to approve the Intergovernmental Agreement for Library Cards with Downers Grove Grade School District 58. We have a second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the Intergovernmental Agreement for Library Cards with Downers Grove School District 58. for library cards with Downers Grove School District 58. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those abstaining. All right, the intergovernmental agreement has been passed. Thank you, Allison, for all your hard work. Right, item B is the general policy update.
All right, as you know, part of our strategic plan is to do a full look at our policy manual and do all of the updates. We did start with the personnel policy, which is the longest piece of the policy manual, because we did have to get some things updated according to the new laws effective on January 1st. So that one kind of had to take precedence over other sections of the policy. So, and we had done the bylaws previously last year, as you all know. So now we are on to the general policy. Now, this is the one that has things like our code of conduct included, also security camera policy, and removing the Friends of the Library as an independent organization, but leaving our foundation in there. And one of the things that are, we have a new section that is about participation in special events, that explicitly allows the library to opt-in to other organizations' special events without creating a limited public forum for, for the public. So if the library opens something to anyone in the community to do, one of the examples that I like to use is our collection windows in the kids' room. So anybody can put a collection in there, then it is up to the library to make the rules and administer that use. The library also can use its building and grounds and opt to participate in another organization's event. For example, the recent ICE Fest by Downtown Management, we had a sculpture in front of the library. We opted in to participating in the Downtown Management event and allowed, and according to their rules. So we did not open a limited public forum in which anyone could exhibit a sculpture in front of the library, because we did not open it to all members of the public. We instead decided to opt-in to participating in another organization's event. We have lots of partnerships with lots of organizations throughout Downers Grove. Most of the things that fall under this policy are in partnership with Downers Grove Downtown Management Corporation. As you all know, we are the only public entity that sits within the Downtown Management Corporation's boundaries, and so we do a lot of stuff with them. We are frequently the pickup point for their scavenger hunts. We are, we host gingerbread storytime before the tree lighting every year, so we are a regular participant with them. We did leave this policy a little more vague to allow us to participate in other entities that are having community-wide or downtown area events, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you for providing additional clarifications.
So it basically is a further clarification of an existing policy.
I will make a motion to approve the, I'm trying to find the exact language, Julie.
General policy.
General policy. I can't find it, there's too many pages down, I gotta go. To approve the general policy as presented.
Second.
All right, we have the motion and a second to approve the general policy update as presented.
I have one quick question. So the code of conduct, which I, I don't know if there were too many changes made to that specific, 2.9, 2.91, the disruptive illegal and prohibited activity, does that, so that applies to all public?
Yes.
Downtown library property and events, including this board meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, let's go ahead, proceed with a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the general policy update as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and all those abstaining. All right, general policy update has been approved as presented. We'll skip, we can see, so we're now at item D, Board of Library Trustees Goals for 2024. This is a discussion item.
And I think I should be the one to lead that discussion. I'm the one who introduced this agenda item. It came out of discussions that we all had in relationship to the library and Director Milvik's goals, and the idea that, you know, because we are, by our bylaws, required to, you know, uphold the values and principles of the library, that we should probably have goals for ourselves as well. And some of those goals are kind of obvious things that plug into our strategic plan, for example, or are things that are just, will increase our ability to do our job as trustees, in supporting the community, in understanding what happens at the library, and also kind of what's happening in the library world more broadly. We're really appreciative, I'm really appreciative, whenever Julie or the staff bring us, you know, tidbits from that library world, not all of us are plugged in as deeply as you all, so it's nice to kind of hear other things that are happening. And I would like to have some accountability, if only for myself, to be able to say, oh yeah, I'm going to go to two other library board meetings, you know, at other communities, and kind of see how they operate, or see a maker's space at another public library in our area. I think that'll be very, I think be really valuable, and I wanted to have a discussion here today about what that might look like, other ideas that you all might have about, you know, things we might accomplish together. Not that we have to have a laundry list of things, because we have enough going on, but at least, you know, choosing, thinking about a couple that we could pursue either individually, like, oh yeah, I'll commit to going to another library board meeting someplace else, or I'll commit to going to El Hurst Public Library to see their space, or as a group, you know, commit to having a discussion about library board, you know, some of the things that we've been talking about, having conversations about, or attending some of the workshops and other things that are available to us as trustees. Some of those could be, you know, kind of more individual, and some could be more group. So I provided some examples that had come out of our discussions in the past, in kind of broad buckets. So one being, understanding in general what our roles as trustees are. There's lots of great resources out there right now, some are fully online and, you know, don't take much time at all, some are more intensive. I know a couple of trustees attended the state library meeting last fall, whatever that was.
Yeah.
Which I understand was a great experience. Second bucket being, kind of helping advance our strategic plan. We have a lot of really ambitious things happening this year. I know, you know, I'd like to be more a part of that, and at least understand kind of what's some of the things that you all are thinking about, so I'd love to, you know, investigate those options. Just kind of basically increasing our awareness of what's happening at our own library. Cardali and Swafna mentioned today, you know, being at the library on a Saturday and talking to people, that might be something that more of us commit to, or more of us kind of just, you know, commit to, and be sharing a board meeting like you guys have done. And then the fourth one has come out of, I think came out of some specific discussions we had had about, you know, the difference between the role of the library director and the role of the board, and that actually, the format and structure of our meetings can be changed by us, because we're the library board, and it's our meeting. So if there are things we want to do differently, if there are things that we want to change about the financial reporting, which I think you've talked about, but not really had an in-depth discussion about in this meeting, then we should commit to doing that for one of the meetings during, during the year, to really explore that and make sure that we're getting what we want and what we need by talking together and understanding what that looks like. So that's kind of why I wanted to put it out there. I, you know, I think we're all, a lot of us are doing some of this stuff already, and it'd be great to just kind of hold ourselves accountable, but also then bring, bring that knowledge and that awareness back here to share with each other, and to share with, you know, the folks that attend these meetings, because, I mean, I take my role as trustee very seriously, and I want to make sure to improve my ability to do my job.
I totally agree. I appreciate that you kind of, as you said, this came out of our discussions about Julie's evaluation, that it was our role also to, you know, just learn more about the role itself. I mean, I know all of us have different skill sets, but to really dig deeper into library, public library specifically is really important. I'm doing the webinar Saturday morning, wild Saturday morning in the week, online. But I think it's a great idea to have some sort of structured, you know, goals. And I know a lot of us have talked about the strategic, the strategic plan and the group, because we want to make it down to the public library, and kind of having a set goal to visit, you know, X, Y, Z libraries, and, you know, specific time, and make sure that we are able to contribute valuefully to the discussions moving forward. It's super important, so thank you. Carissa, I appreciate you having us.
Your usual thorough and thoughtful job, Carissa.
That's right.
I, I think this is an excellent list, this, these four buckets, as you call them. I have trouble prioritizing them at the moment, because they're all, they're all useful and important, and I think that each of these four are worth our, talking about a bit, as long, if we can allocate a certain amount of time at a couple of future board meetings, to talk about each of these buckets, and thereby prioritize them, and put some more meat into them perhaps, but I'm excited about this.
I had one other thought on this, and it's, it's not completely different, it expands some of the things that you've said here, and that is that I happen, through some other organizations, to have run into people who are on other library boards in the area, and invited, invited them to do an exchange program. It was obviously tongue-in-cheek there. They're, they're actually in awe of the fact that we have people show up to our meetings. We really are grateful for the participation, even when there may be some disagreements. Some of them are incredulous when I tell them how many people show up to our meetings. But, but I think that could be useful, too, in terms of if we're visiting other libraries, is there an opportunity to talk to, not necessarily staff, although that's fine, but maybe a representative of their board, to see what kinds of issues they're facing, more of a, of a peer-to-peer kind of thing. Our board has some unique qualities to it compared to a lot of the others in the region, but I'm sure the issues are similar.
Yeah, I love that idea, Marty. And I, and one of the last things, I think what we were, I think we were all at the legislative meetup, it was really interesting to listen with other board members, and the way things operate at different libraries is so different, and like, like Marty said, there's really different ways that people themselves perceive it, and it's fascinating. And I'd love to learn more about that, and kind of how, how they've been thinking through their strategic plan, thinking through some of the ways they operate.
Yeah.
I also, I mean, to echo everyone else, I think it's a wonderful idea, especially as we're thinking about how we're changing spaces, what other people are doing with their spaces. Going to the ILA conference was really eye-opening, I think, for me, just to be able to speak to other trustees really honestly. We're the only ones who kind of get what we're doing, but also having a list like this sort of holds us accountable, and I, I feel like accountability is something that we want to be to, to be doing, with each other and for ourselves in this role. So I'm, I'm really excited. I really love the idea of meeting other trustees, going to other spaces, taking more classes, especially about the things that I, that I'm not strong in, like, those kind of things. For Julie to explain some things to me, so I, I really appreciate that. I think it's a great idea. Thank you for, thank you for doing this.
Well, I think, I mean, I, I would like to hear from you all about, you know, do we each say, okay, I'm gonna, I'll do three of these things, and we kind of each go off and, you know, commit to those things and document them, or how much, how much do we decide to do together, or how much do we say, okay, let's tackle bullet number two this year, or whatever it might be. I'm curious about what you might think about kind of moving forward.
So I'm curious, is this something that we can maybe do, like, like a board retreat twice a year, where there's like an exchange of, like, okay, well, I hit up this webinar, and these are the main points that I learned, and then I went to Helen Plum Library, and they did this, or some sort of, you know, kind of pow-wow of what we learned, right? And I know a lot of this is, you know, dependent on our availability, and, you know, I probably have more availability to drive around to the libraries, and someone may have more ability to jump on it, you know? So I kind of feel like, yeah, like maybe us kind of committing or, you know, pledging to some extent, you know, our, our commitment to do such and such might be the best way to take it, because they all seem like they provide value in different ways.
Well, I agree. I also don't want to, you know, for those of us who have more flexibility than others who don't, I don't want to say, like, oh, you know, you're really busy, let's, you have to do all these things.
Right, go drive around.
Yeah, and elements of understanding what your own scheduling capability is, what you're going to do, is really important.
Yeah, for us to spread out and then pool together, you know, and kind of strengthen all different aspects of our leadership, whether it be, you know, getting ideas from different libraries, or, you know, getting more information on, you know, library legislation.
So for the next meeting, do you all want to come with a couple of other ideas for yourself, for what you might want to shoot, what you might want to take on? You know, again, not infinite numbers, you don't have to date, you don't have to hit every bullet, I know you have to. But, but, you know, with a few, you know, achievable, completely achievable goals, and I love the idea of having some kind of, you know, point in time to say, oh yeah, let's all come together and learn about this thing, what achievement, what achievement, like, to really solidify that, and then have a discussion around it, because I think, you know, we might take away from the experience our own reflections on it, but when other people contribute to that, it kind of makes the conversation more rich, and helps us then maybe even generate different ideas about, about how to think about what we do as trustees.
Yeah, and I, I would love to look through this again and again, and find some, some things for me. I've done a lot over the years, but it's been a while since I did some of these things, and I can do them again. I can still learn. Quite honestly, I'm just a little bit drained, if I may use that word, in the last few days in preparation of this meeting, but I can commit by next time to have more input.
Well, and think about things that might energize you, too. I mean, I think that's, well, I mean, you know, it's, no, I'm serious, I mean, like, talking, like Marty's saying, reaching out to other trustees who, who sit in seats like ours, it might, you know, in some cases, it might all, like, help us feel more confident in our role, or confident that we're not alone in kind of what we're working on here.
Or resources that we might have through whatever other work we're doing in the community, that we could suggest some partnerships, or something like that, you know, whether it's, I don't know, programs or exchanges or whatever, you know, where we're, we're not reinventing the wheel, but we're connecting dots, because most of us do all kinds of other things, as well as the library stuff, Julie and me.
Yeah.
Clearly, the first three things on this list are, having, giving a little more thought, are pretty darn important. The strategic plan, understanding board responsibilities, knowing what's going on in the library, those are key. The structure and format of the monthly meetings, we can also deal with certainly if we have input for that. That's one notch below, I think, in my mind, but, yeah, I want to give some thought to this. Thank you. Thank you for putting this together.
There's a, there's another part of this, too, that, that, you know, I, for years, I've come to library programs and done stuff that people do at the library. Since becoming a trustee, I have felt not only more connected to the library, more connected to the, to the community. I've been here since 1979, and it's a whole different perspective. But generally, if I'm coming to the, to the library, I try to get here early and just do a walk-around, see what's going on. I've talked to a lot of the, the staff that are, you know, we don't normally have direct interaction with, and that, that's been a really interesting experience, too. That was something I kind of took on for myself, anyway, because it's real easy when, you know, you know who certain people are that we regularly do business with, but just, you know, talking to the people that maybe work the shifts that we're not usually here for, or in the departments that we don't usually interact with, I, I think that's important, too, to keep us connected, really down on the ground level, what's going level, what's going on at the library. I think that's something that I certainly had not thought about too seriously, that was starting to take much more seriously.
Thank you. All right, so we've got a little homework for next.
And an agenda item that will come back.
Yes. Unfinished business. All right, that being said, Tim, we don't have any unfinished business, correct? All right. So next up is the executive session. Do we have a motion to move into?
Do we have to do, actually?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll move to. Into an executive session.
Oh, okay.
And close the meeting after closing the executive session.
And close the meeting after closing the executive session. Thank you. All right, was that, was that the first or the second?
First.
Okay, then the second. All right, perfect.
We have a motion and a second to move into a second session, after which we will be adjourned.
And the executive session is for the performance blah, blah, blah of an individual staff member.
Who shall we name?
Because you have, I, I'm sorry, I forgot about this. It did not specifically.
If I could jump in, I want to thank everyone in the room for your interest in the library. We hope to see you many times in the future. Thank you.